All right, we're gonna get started. This is a special board meeting of Edgewood City Schools Board of Education. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Gabbard.
Here.
Mrs. Ashcraft.
Present.
Mr. Messerschmidt.
Here.
Mr. Pressler.
Here.
Mr. York.
Present.
Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm gonna look for a motion for the report of the agenda. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, but a second.
Second.
Mr. Pressler. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft.
Yes.
Mr. York.
Yes.
Question carries five zero.
Next item, we have public participation. Just a reminder, when you get up here, please take your name, your address, and you've got about three minutes. So, Mrs. Bowers, would you like to start?
Sure.
Good evening, I really didn't prepare anything, so I was sure I was gonna be able to meet in tonight. First of all, I live at forty-three U. D. Lee Menace Drive. Tonight, I would just like to talk about how this meeting came together. I understand you have to have special meetings from time to time to talk about urgent matters, but we already had a board meeting on the schedule for May twenty-second. And I understand you wanna have conversations in regards to things you may vote on at that meeting. However, the community should be able to hear those things. You should have that conversation and the ability for the community to hear as much of that conversation as possible. That's what Sunshine Wall is about, speaking openly and publicly about your decisions you're going to make. And I appreciate that you did the public participation on this meeting. Normally, you're touching on these, don't have that. But I just urge you, if you're going to have these meetings, don't give people twenty-four hours' notice. Give them people time to be able to come here, to gather their thoughts, to think about what they're gonna say. That'll help in your transparency. And that, I know you guys are really trying to be more transparent, but just these little things just make us feel like still not trustworthy. So just think about that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will go to treasure items. Mrs. Bowers, would you start, please?
Yes, sir. The first thing I wanted to discuss, I am in the process of working on the five-year forecast that is going to be coming to the board for approval at the May twenty-second meeting, required by law to be filed by January first, so it has to be done at the next board meeting. Again, just wanted to give you a heads-up what you're going to see in the coming week. We have been making some cuts, obviously, with purchase services and things. I want to just tell you, this is gonna continue to be dialed in. It's gonna change on the daily. I've probably ran this model more than a hundred times in the last month, just trying to have the most accurate and up-to-date information that I can. But just so you know, it's gonna change again. Like I said, we've been making a lot of cuts. We're gonna have to make some more cuts. We obviously know the results of the May levy, so we're gonna, you know, just figure out ways that we're either gonna have to generate more revenue, cut expenditures or whatnot. Ms. Spidey has some things she would like to discuss, I'm not gonna go into too much about what they're thinking. But again, in the March meeting, the board did indicate if this levy didn't pass, that we should look at cutting one million additional dollars from our budget. Some of the things that we said we were gonna look at was state minimum transportation, pay to participate, or no extracurricular activities, and additional reduction in staff. If there are other things that you want us to look at, we would like to know what those are. Like I said, we're getting ready to file the spider forecast, and that is a huge factor in this. So the next thing I wanna talk about are some upcoming expenses, just because they're also going to be a little large, we anticipate. So we have a plumbing issue at the Seven Mile Early Childhood Building there. Immediately, as soon as school is out, we have four ACs going in. They're gonna run a camera under the ground to fix some plumbing issues. I don't know what that's gonna cost. The idea that I was given, it could be thirty thousand, it could be up to fifty thousand until they take that camera in, I don't know. The scope of that work, from what I understand, there are pipes under the ground that are corroding. Water and gravel has begun to seep into those pipes, so we have to do something. It has caused water to back up and stand in the basement. For whatever reason, the last two times, we've got the heavy rain. I've got a call that they had to get four ACs out today, just to relieve that water, so it wasn't standing. So again, I don't know what that's gonna look like for us, but I wanna let you know that that is coming down the pipe. There's also a section of roof out there. We had another section over at the primary building, similar to this size, repaired, and we thought we would also have that repaired in the same way what they do if they come in and re-coat it. I was just informed yesterday that that is a metal roof out there, and it cannot be re-coated. So it needs to be replaced with some other type of repair. We do not have a quote yet, like, just learned yesterday that it can't be re-coated. Like, primary last month, I think it was like twenty-four thousand dollars, that's what I was anticipating for this. So it's gonna be more, I just don't know what, until we can get somebody out there to give us a quote. Also, the maintenance man told us yesterday that there's some HVAC problems out there as well. I instructed him yesterday to go ahead and get quotes. Soon as I get those, I'll be passing them on and sharing it with you, but I just, I just want you to know that it's coming down the pipe. Soon as I know what that looks like, I will share that as well. Item F on there, I also got a notice from EPC yesterday. Our health insurance premiums will increase January one by nine point five percent. Last year, we only went up eight percent. I did get a letter from them as well, and our ratio, the two here, the claims were a hundred and twenty-two percent. So they're actually, it's a service to us, I'm surprised that they didn't go up more than what they did, because our premiums paid are less than what they've paid on the claims, in other words. So we're fortunate to only come in at nine point five percent.
Do you have a dollar figure for nine point five percent?
I did have that.
Seven hundred and thirty-nine.
Is it on here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's on the screen.
Okay. Yeah, about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand is what that's gonna cost us. And then my final item, right now, we're using a spare for our special needs. We really need to get a special needs bus. Looking at that, we're quoting that about one hundred and twenty dollars. Or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars if something happens and we can't. I talked to Shane today, he said he could start looking for a used one if we need to go that route. But again, we're running a spare for our special needs bus, and it's just not an ideal situation. So I wanna let you know that we're gonna be looking into that as well.
So what makes it, what qualifies it as a special needs bus?
It could be a lift, I don't know if Shane can handle lifts. I'm not.
Oh, chairs.
Little chairs, huh? How many do we have in the district right now?
Two.
Two, and one on spare?
One of them that's running is a spare.
Why is that not optimal? What is this that way?
It needs to be replaced, so basically, they should've probably replaced one before. So they've been using the spare now in a place where we need to replace that. And we need two special needs buses for our routes, which are IP-driven.
So if we only buy one, then we still, we'll still be short one?
No, we have one in operation. One in operation plus the spare. Spare needs to be replaced.
I think your question is, are we, we've been using a spare all year?
Yes.
Okay.
To my knowledge.
And is that, spares are good to be high mileage, what's making us say that needs to be replaced?
I'm basing this off of Shane coming to me and said that's what we need to look at. Obviously, we've replaced some regular buses. We're trying to get on a schedule. It might not necessarily be the miles. For example, if a bus has been in an accident or had major engine repairs, and it continues to overheat, and the way he told me, it's a two thousand and eight bus, it might stay in service longer than a two thousand and twelve bus for those reasons. It's just the condition of the bus.
So he has all buses on a, basically, a replacement plan. The idea is that the average bus, you get about ten to twelve years out of it. We've gotten up to eighteen on some. So this is way overdue and is needed in order to meet compliance. But as far as the specifics, we need Shane to report that.
I wanna, I wanna back you up a little bit, Patty.
Yep.
You started off with purchase services, you said that's going to go down. Could you give us an example of what purchase services are?
So purchase services, maybe like where we're paying for students who are placed out. Purchase services could be professional development, anything like that. So you heard me talk last month, I've been working on trying to close down purchase orders. Some of these are for ACs for plumbing, or they want a sprinkler. We have a lot of open purchase orders still, and I'm working to shut those down. Once we get those closed, and we're gonna have to do it by June anyway, to close out the fiscal year.
We talked about coaches, anything we do through Butler County or through other agencies.
Yes.
Those are all purchase services. So part of our cost reduction plan was to decrease coaches, instructional coach costs, that's just one example. The IEP, purchase services, you pretty much look at averages over the last several years. You really don't always know exactly where those are going based on team decisions and individual needs.
So we're working on getting those down, just spending less wherever we can. Obviously, we've had these problems here recently, and we're having to open purchase orders back up, but we can't leave water standing in a building. So I hope by the time we get back in here next month, that I have a more solid number for different purchase services. But that's definitely in the area that we're homing in on, trying to bring those costs down. If I could circle back a little bit, in talking about this preliminary five-year forecast, I actually went down to Butler County Educational Service Center today. All the Butler County treasurers did, in fact, and met with Nancy Nix, the Butler County auditor, as well as. Some of you will recall this article that came out about forty-two percent property tax increase. I just wanna explain that to you a little bit. So the county had recommended a twenty-four percent increase. The state come through and recommended a forty-two percent increase. They're going back and forth right now, and what she said today, we're gonna fall somewhere between that. Inevitably, it's gonna be up to the tax commissioner. It'll be at his discretion what those rates are. Some school districts are gonna see more of an increase, like Lakota. Some districts are gonna see the smaller increase. She did mention that Hamilton-Middletown would be on the smaller increase. So basically, what they're doing, the county takes the sales from twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two to determine their tax rates. The state is only looking at twenty-two. Many of you will know, some homes will sell for fifty thousand dollars over asking price. I'm a little more privy to some of that information, having family members that work in real estate, and I see people purchasing homes over value. That's, may not necessarily be the true value of that home, but if a person wants that home, bad enough, they're paying above asking price to get it. And there are so many things like that that go into these tax rates. It just, the numbers are not concrete, they're not, so that's why they're going back and forth with the tax commissioner. But just, I wanted to let you know, she said we will fall somewhere in between that. We are not gonna see forty-two percent increase here in our school district. We could see twenty-four percent, some areas may fall a little less. But within every school district, she said the tax rates will vary, not tremendously, but they will vary. One side of seventy-three will be a little different than the other side of seventy-three. So just wanted to keep, want you to keep that in mind, because we've been hearing a lot of. Something else we're gonna continue to watch, they have all the way through June, so that deadline is in July, before they have to do anything with that. It will impact our five-year forecast, Butler continues to watch. If they come through and make a decision on it, obviously, we can get it in our five-year forecast and.
Are you figuring any of that right now for our budget?
Right now, I have a twenty in there, that's what they're saying is a safe number for me right now. If they come back through and sign something, and the tax commissioner says twenty-four, we'll put that in there. But I do not want to put phantom dollars out there in our five-year forecast and it not come through. So again, I just, I wanna watch it. This is gonna change every day. Every day that I have done this five-year forecast, something changes. And whether it's taxes or purchase services, it just changes on the daily. So it's gonna continue to do that. It's based on assumptions, and I'm just projecting what we see today.
So are there, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good.
Are there any other assumptions in this than that? In regard to state funding model and all the other kinds of things?
That is not in there.
Okay.
And I'm watching that as well. We're still on our twenty, twenty, twenty-eighteen, and watching if they agree to go with the twenty-twenty-two. Again, it'll be reflected, but I don't wanna forecast on something that we don't have, knowing where we sit today with deficit spending. I do not wanna make it worse.
So we're, this is basically what we currently are dealing with?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
So if memory serves me correctly, we found out what our budget was last year in July, correct? That's when we found out the state.
That's the fiscal.
That's the fiscal state coming.
Yeah, July one.
And I just think we knew July one, I thought it was more like the middle of July. So we won't have a board meeting until.
July fifteenth or seventeenth, I believe.
Yeah, it's right before fair, right?
Correct.
So we, I don't know that we can wait to make decisions until then on what we're gonna do. So I, you know, I feel like we're talking about, you know, should we, should we, you know, spend this, should we make a forecast based off what we think is coming in? It doesn't even sound like they've decided what this property value increase is gonna be.
Correct.
When did they say that was gonna happen?
They have, all the way through June. They're back and forth with the tax commissioner right now. They have, they have to have a decision by July one.
So we really, we're at a point right now where we have to make decisions based off of what the five-year forecast tells us, based off of what you have got so far. Unfortunately, the timing doesn't work very well for us with the way it aligns.
And that's why I'm watching it every day. We're trying to listen in, was a decision made?
So Mark, you bring up a good point. I think the question tonight, and the discussion that needs to be had here, is what do we have an appetite for? Based on today's numbers, are we gonna make drastic cuts? Are we gonna make a million-dollar cuts, which we've been somewhat planning for? Drastic cuts would be take everything down to state minimum and do no elective, no whatever. I personally don't think that's, that's the way to do this. I think we could make a million-dollar cuts, look where the biennium budget gets issued on July one, where that falls. We'll have a little bit more information in regard to where Butler County taxes are gonna fall, and then we can continue to be cautious in our spending. Take a look in the fall, what we need to start cutting for the following year. I think the community has spoken loud and clear regarding where they stand. I think we need to assume, we need to be making cuts and continue with that trajectory. That's my opinion, recommendation to the board. Wait till fall, presidential election, let's see where we are. And we may be at state minimum operating in our courses, but at least the, the community will know exactly where at, and we're serious, and this is what we have to do.
I, I think I'd fall in line with that. If I'm looking at this forecast, we're talking about fiscal twenty-six, right?
Yeah.
I, honest to goodness, sitting here tonight and saying that I think we need to make a million and a half in cuts, I don't know, if there are no assumptions other than what you've already said, we're not looking at a deficit until twenty-six. If the community has spoken on a earned income tax, and the preferential, preferred mode is property tax, you know, you pass a property tax, if you pass a property tax, you collect it in January of the year that you need it. So that would mean, or you collect on it in January of the year you need it, which would mean we would collect January one of twenty-six. I, I have, but some, I've seen some, I think we would be premature to start making additional drastic cuts.
I would like to also just add, let's think about this. As you talked about, the budget was issued last July. When I came into the picture, just participating in the audience, was around October, November. I heard one point six deficit spending for this year. Through restrictive spending, cutting back, it looks like we're gonna fall where?
That one there has about eight hundred.
So that's half of what we projected. So if we can continue to make cost savings decisions like that, where are we gonna be after the biennium budget? Where are we gonna be next year when some things fall more in order? And then make tougher decisions from there. I mean, I think, do, again, what do you, what does the community wanna offer our students? What do we want education to look like for the Edgewood community? Do we want state minimum and be extremely cautious? And not know where all this is falling, or cut cautiously around one million, or a little bit more, whatever you guys decide? And continue to offer some variety of courses to our students.
So I, I think, you know, we, going back to what Patty was talking about with the, you know, we talked about HVAC, we talked about if water's standing in the basement. You're referring to this as a plumbing issue at Seven Mile. I mean, it's a, it's a septic issue, is what it sounds like. Those aren't really one and the same, and I think words matter. I know we've got some HVAC issues, and, you know, obviously, the middle school has got plenty of maintenance opportunities. I know that when John was still here, and the walkthroughs I did with him, he kinda gave, Andrew and I, we weren't even, we hadn't even done the organizational meeting, kinda gave us an overview on a lot of the maintenance things that were required. And there's quite a bit of maintenance that's, that's out there. And, you know, we, part of the cuts that we're reflecting is the elimination of a, of a business manager. And one of the things that has really got me uneasy, and got me really concerned, is I feel like, I don't feel like we have anybody that's doing that job right now. I feel like most of that's coming to you, Patty. I mean, I think you're already taking on as much as you can take on. But I think is, I think it would be really good to have somebody that can say, this is, this is your responsibility to, to understand the maintenance needs of this district. With five buildings, some of them, from what I was told with, by John, is that they, they need some pretty significant maintenance. We're talking roofs and HVAC upgrades and just different things. And I'm afraid it's gonna get away from us, is one of the big concerns that, that I had. It feels like, as, as we're talking about this, there's, there's a lot of stuff that's going on. We're talking about getting quotes, but it doesn't look like there's anybody that's actually coordinating that. So part of the cuts that we already have talked about was the elimination of a business manager, but I'm afraid that we're gonna lose track of some of these big ticket items, because we don't have anybody that's really identified as the person that watches that. We don't have a facilities engineer, facilities director, or, so it's just, it sounds like it's just random quotes that are making its way to, to your desk. And I think, I just think we gotta have somebody that's looking at those kinds of things.
You know, to go along with that, I, I, this is my second term. I've never heard, I've never heard mentioned anything about Seven Mile's sewage treatment facility. It has its own, right?
Yes.
I've never, I haven't heard anything about us doing any kind of upkeep on that, or maintenance, or whatever. I know we used to do that a lot. So if it is a septic issue at Seven Mile, has that system been?
We pay about fifteen thousand a year for.
For that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so somebody is watching it, maintaining it. I know we, we have spent a lot of money on that system in the past. We had actually, I think, routed under the, the tracks and all over the place. But, so, okay, that's, that was my point, I guess. If it is septic and without a guy like John watching it, or somebody watching it, it's not your job, really. Yours, yours is countering all things. So.
We are piecing it together.
I believe that, that it's an actual Edgewood student, former student.
Matthew, Matt.
I think he might be taken care of.
Yeah.
So he's been taken care of for years.
Yeah. Now I forget his last, his first name's Matt. I know where he lives, I could go to his house.
Most of these cuts, they wouldn't take place until the beginning of next year, anyway.
Correct.
So, and we have July to be able to, once we get the, you know, budget for next year, we could actually, actually lock it in and have a better idea of exactly what we need to cut. Because the thing I'm afraid of is, you know, if we say, hey, we're only gonna cut a million dollars, we don't get the funding that we think, and then we're in a panic, year two, year three, trying to make up for the, the lost, you know.
So if you're talking about adding a list, right, I'd say come up with a little bit more than a million-dollar cuts.
I'd have to agree. I mean, I agree with Mark in that, in that regards, you know, if there's, I think that in that area, we're thin. And I know a lot of people in the community don't like to hear that, but that's my own personal opinion.
We're thin where?
With our administrators, like the cuts that we've made.
We've made, to date, we've made, just in the last two rounds, meaning in twenty-twenty-two and now twenty-twenty-three, we've made eighteen percent cuts to the administrative team, eight percent cuts, cuts to the certified team, and six percent cuts to the classified team.
And I know all we've done is we've taken, you know, people's responsibilities and turned around and told them on somebody else.
Yep.
And so, I mean, I do, I do agree that, that's probably something we need to look at. Because I think in the long run, it's just gonna cost us money with letting things get away and, you know. I mean, it's, you know, with Patty having to oversee all that, it's tough anyways.
Okay, that's not just me, I mean, it's Kelly Stuckey.
Alicia Adams has.
Yes.
Done a lot, she's working with county people. Matter of fact, we got free furniture donated through her work and, and her connections through Hamilton County for a classroom, which needs to be noted somewhere in regard to the alternative revenue that comes in, that's helping support our budget as well, but that's just aside that.
This is a very large footprint. We've got five buildings spread from one end of the district to the other, and, you know, just with all the maintenance and stuff that take place in the, I don't think people actually realize everything that John was doing behind the scenes, but he, he choreographed all the maintenance and all those things. So I'm, I'm just very concerned this is gonna get away from us.
So, okay, then I would just say we need to come back to what is there an appetite? Let's come up with, without a decision, give me ideas, so I can come in to May twenty-third with at least an idea of, of what I'm out, we're talking about. So you wanna move into my portion in regard to what we're thinking, or what I'm thinking my proposal is?
Let me tell you what I think, and then you tell me.
Okay, you go right ahead, sir.
If I'm looking at this forecast correctly, and it tells me that we're, we have red numbers on here at twenty-six, fiscal twenty-six is July twenty-five.
Yes.
So if that's when we're looking at a deficit.
We're looking at a deficit, hold on, next year.
Bottom line, you're talking about deficit.
So you're thinking about.
I'm talking about the bo, the bottom line is where we have to meet by law.
Also, we wanna wait until the last second.
No, I, I want to be able, it would be my feeling. As an educator and a person on the board, whose responsibility is to provide these kids with as much as we can give them up until the bitter end, we need to do that. We need to give them all the resources that we can give them. We need to give them all the extracurriculars we can give them. We need to give the teachers everything they need to teach, and, and be an effective educator until we absolutely have to have this. We're not the business of making money, we're in the business of educating kids. And I understand putting money back for a rainy day, but I don't, I don't believe, and this is just my personal, I'm one of five people. So I don't believe in putting money back for a rainy day when it's taking away services for a child.
I agree, I'm not talking about taking money away or, or putting money away. I'm talking about, you know, trying to limit your deficit to where you're still providing the education, and you get creative and look for ways to be able to still keep that level of education the same.
That's the expectation every single day, whether we have.
I I agree, but what I'm saying is, is some things such as, if if there's ways that, you know, we can get away from not affecting the classroom, and we can still give them a quality education and stuff, to where we can look ahead. Because the thing I'm afraid of is getting last seconds where now, now it's in the voters' hands, and we waited three, four, or five years, and we're going, how do we, you know, now we're here, now I'm talking about cutting this, cutting that, you know, and absolutely destroying that kid's junior, senior year, or, you know, any of the kids that, you know, I don't know, I just.
Here, well, I I don't think.
Because I just see, because right now, I mean, it, we're gonna compound, so like, next year, we're in an eight hundred and ten thousand dollar deficit. If we're able to cut, you know, a million dollars, we get our our funding that we think, and we're able to just financially make just a couple cuts, then we're gonna cut that that deficit the following year in half, so then it's gonna make it easier on us in the future if we start now.
Start adding things back in, you're right back in the same boat, so I'm just saying.
I'm not saying we shouldn't operate fiscally responsible in any way.
I know you're, I agree, I agree with you.
I I don't believe in starting programs for kids early, or earlier than we need to. This, and and this is May of twenty-three, uh, we're looking at a deficit in twenty-six, so we're already looking ahead in time with what we can do, and and with the, with the leadership that we currently have on board, I think they're gonna be looking every single day at how, and week and month, how we can do this more effectively. I have utmost confidence in these guys to do that, I, and I agree.
But that's not really three years, how much is twenty-five months?
It's tw- it's, yeah.
Well, twenty-five months is not three years.
That starts July of twenty-five.
Right.
I think, I think we're, I think we're agree, I think we're saying the same thing, but what I mean is, is, you know, prior to last year, the one point eight million dollars in cuts, when was the last time we went through and evaluated things and made cuts? You know, and I think, I'm not blaming by, but I think it's easy to get comfortable, it's easy to get set in the day-to-day, you know, operations and way things work, to where if this is a good time to go ahead and take, take this situation to evaluate everything, and how can we be more productive?
Yes.
So I think it's something that we definitely need to look into.
So so how much have we already cut?
We have easily.
Kelly Matt says one point two.
I agree.
Let's, let's ask the realistic though.
We have easily cut one point two. Once we get these purchase orders closed down in June, and again, like I said, this is a moving target. We have some other ideas, some things that we're looking at, um, maybe transferring something else over to some extra grant funds that we have, that will pull it away from the general fund, we cut the one point two. In looking at this, we felt comfortable that if we made another million dollar cut right now, that would ease a lot of this burden.
How long would it carry us?
Like, if this, and again, because these are all ifs, if this five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars per year, it was at phase in, uh, with this twenty twenty-two budget, again, we're not gonna know that until July as well, if it does, we could go out into that next year. We can't bring back what we've cut, we need to make this million dollars in cuts. Hopefully this five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars a year comes in from the FY twenty twenty-two funding model, and not knowing what these property values are gonna do for us, we could stretch out into that extra year if if we make these cuts.
So the cuts that we've already made are reflected in this forecast?
Yeah, well, yes, yes.
Minus the one million that we're talking about now.
Correct.
The the additional money that we're we're going to talk about tonight, right?
Yes.
So also, is this happen for this forecast to come out like this? You're saying what what we potentially have in front of us has to happen in order for this forecast to look like this?
Or something, if, not this particular plan, but this amount.
So there are more assumptions built into this than what we've talked about?
No, 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 hang on, I I miss.
No, ma'am.
I do, so the, what we're talking about tonight is not reflected in this, in this forecast, because that's not a decision, we're just having a conversation. On May, this conversation will lead to what we vote on.
Better position than what.
On May twenty-third, and then this can be updated from there.
All right.
So another million dollars certainly impacts that eight hundred thousand deficit spending, is gonna push out to maybe two hundred thousand plus, I don't know.
Because I, I'll tell you guys.
And I get worried when I start doing math.
We may get the budget in July from this ODE if they're still with us, but they very well could change it in December next year, because they have done that before. So, you know, it's, it it can be a moving target, uh, it can be, hopefully that's not what happens, but, uh, so there are, there are times that you gotta, it's like reacting in a, you know, you gotta pivot and duck and all kinds of stuff on the, on the fly sometimes, but, uh.
From, from what I've, what I've heard so far, it sounds like we're we're pretty much in agreement that we do have to backfill John Thomas's job at some point, sooner than later. Whether that's a, whether that's a.
Person.
Yeah, I I agree with you there.
In some form, we need to do that.
Yeah. So, so you already said we possibly need to cut a little more than a million, because we wanna try to cover that salary.
So I I wanna talk about this really, because, you know, we, when, when I first swore in a little over a year ago, was looking at these numbers, I mean, it was just overwhelming. There was just massive amounts of numbers on spreadsheets, and I feel like I've gotten a little bit better with this, but, you know, we have been in deficit spending for three years now.
Three quarters, yes.
And we had a, we had a rainy day fund, and it looked to me like that rainy day fund has kinda shrunk a little bit. So you were talking about, you know, not the business of making money or putting anything back for a rainy day fund, but do, what, I I know, I think I know how much money we have between, you know, some of the investments and things that we have, and then basically our, like, our term, our savings account that we, we have. Are the, the account balances in those, ha- I, obviously, we've had to pull money out of those at some point to cover deficit spending in the past. Are those amounts, are those, the money that we have in those two accounts, is that where that needs to be? Do we have enough money put back for a district our size for that rainy day?
If you talk to other districts, no, we do not.
How many days could we have? Usually typically, it's eighty days, right?
I thought sixty days.
See, I I came from a district working where we had three hundred and some days, or two hundred and eighty days of money put back, which was taking money away from kids, in my opinion, so the average is what?
Because the reason I bring that up is, I mean, we, we just.
Sixty days.
Sixty days.
We just failed an election, you know, we failed our our quest for election, and we, if we're in negative spending in FY twenty-six, that's really July of twenty-five, that's twenty-five months from now, there's only four election cycles between now and then. So, I mean, you you've got four more chances to try to pass, I'll be honest with you, I I think, you know, with the fall election and all the other levels that are gonna be on the ballot, and all the, you know, all the discussion around, you know, I think it's with what property values are gonna do and all that, I think that makes it very tough, so I, I mean, I don't think we can't, I think we have to consider, I don't think we can discredit what we have in our rainy day fund, because if we don't have enough money compared to other districts our size, we need to consider.
Well, and I, let me, let me clarify, I I don't, I don't believe in letting our rainy day fund go in our reserves here. I think we need to have, you know, eighty-nine days of revenue, but, but what I was.
You don't believe in taking programs away to build it up?
Yeah, I don't believe in.
I agree with that.
Growing that at the expense of doing things for kids, I I think there does have to be that, because we we just found out what we have, but, uh, like, I just think we need to.
We need to plan to put it back, we need to plan what we, I think, I think we got a pretty good number to work from, and, I mean, some of this discussion is probably stealing some thunder from.
Hey, trust me, there isn't. There's no thunder, this has been stressful.
So, uh, I think, I think we probably need to go ahead and move, let's move to superintendent items, I think that'll probably touch on a lot of things we're we're already talking about.
Well, I think we've, we've pretty much touched on it, as you said, my, again, my recommendation would be to decide on a dollar amount. Prior to to this evening, it was around a million dollars, we need to reevaluate our five-year forecast after our biennium budget is issued in July. And I would like to work with the community to reevaluate our strategic plan, are we, are these goals still effective? Do we have a budget to, um, make those programs that are reported in our goals work? Um, get an idea of exactly what needs to, more items that could be cut or brought in, and have a more strategic plan in that way. I mean, I've, I've been on the job since February first, I have to tell you, I've never cut two million in my career at one time, that alone in just a few short months. So this, this is a lot, in my opinion, um, and in that, I have to tell you, I know the board in March talked about, do we offer sports? Do we not offer sports? If so, what's the amount? I don't have the stomach to take things away from children, however, you're the board, and you make those, that decision, I would like to recommend in, on May twenty-third, that we increase pay to play. I've been doing some homework in the county, now, prior to the homework, if we increased athletic, any athletic program, I'm not talking about clubs, I'm talking about athletic programs, if we increased that to fully fund itself, it would be eleven hundred dollars. Nobody has the stomach for that, so to sit here and say what dollar amount is it gonna be, I I would say take it off the table. What dollar amount can we afford to keep paying? Um, Ross is increasing their fee to eight hundred and twenty-five, Talwanda, last time, I don't think a hundred percent decided, it's been about four weeks since I spoke to them, but it was somewhere around nine hundred, I would say we need to look at something around seven hundred, seven fifty. And that would bring in, that would generate over three hundred thousand towards that deficit spending. Also, I was surprised to see that fees have not increased for families in years, you could tell me how long it's been. We're still charging somewhere around fifty dollars at the younger grades, fifty-five, up to, um, not even seventy-five to the high school. It's costing the district close to a hundred dollars per student, so again, the district's funding some of those supplies that qualify for, um, families to fund, I say we take them up to a hundred percent, I mean, it is for their students, and they pay a hundred percent. That would generate another hundred and ninety thousand for the district. Um, we can reduce force staff, again, it gets painful, but we certainly can do that. Uh, we have several savings around attrition, the sad thing is, when communities start talking about cost reduction and and losing programs, people fly, I have to tell you, I've, I've had at least three resignations fall on my desk just this week, it hurts, and some quality staff, quality staff. Um, I get it, though, when when things, we get in a crisis, or they think we're in a crisis, they run. But through attrition, some of those positions we're not replacing, so we've not had to do the reduction in force that we said we were gonna do in March. Uh, but continue to look at those positions, through our community survey, I will tell you, ROTC came out low. I was told last week, we only had like twenty that participate, I found out it was more like fifty. But if that's low on our, um, community survey, and the participation's not where it used to be, I think that's something we need to look at. Now, I will tell you, this hurts too, I don't like any of this, guys, I have to tell you, and ladies, I don't like any of it, but we have had two psychologists leave our pay for Butler County, or excuse me, our teacher pay and paraprofessionals, classified. This is nothing to brag about, we're at the lower quadrant in Butler County, we just lost two psychologists, one's retiring, but another is taking a job where they can make twenty thousand more. We're not gonna be able to hang on to our quality staff if we don't look at salaries. And again, people are probably going, oh, my gosh, how can you look at salaries? Do we want quality people with our our students? That is part of an equation of doing business. Um, and in my, again, you've heard me say, this isn't about just cutting, this is about how can we become more effective, higher performing at the lowest cost? Um, and I just think we have to sit down and evaluate everything. Unfortunately, with two psychologists leaving, we'd like to have a psychologist in every building, we have mental health needs, we have lots of assessments that are needed. But we can lessen what we're doing with psychologists and put them in just for testing and do some job sharing, so that's an opportunity that I would like to move back in when the budget allows, but we could move down from five psychologists to four. I don't like it, but we can do it, and it's gonna hurt, and it's gonna come out somewhere, trust me, all of this will. Um, we're looking at cafeteria, custodian, paraprofessional, and, matter of fact, um, my own secretary is moving to another position. We're not replacing her, we're all feeling it, so, um, we're gonna continue to look at some of those positions. But between that and what the board talked about, moving to state minimum for transportation, um, I believe we can get to close to that million dollar range. Now, if you're talking about adding more administrators and doing something else, we need to say, what else are we adding to this list? Because we can't do this and then add and think we're gonna keep getting, you know, the deficit, um, where we want it, the deficit spending. So those are the things, I just wanna hear a discussion, I'd like to hear your personal opinion, this is not a night to vote, but let's have a discussion. You know, and and through the discussion, it'll guide me, what, or what am I putting on the agenda come Monday?
So what's our goal here, I mean, you know, so what's our goal here, you know, like, we talked about, we spent a lot of time talking about fiscal year twenty-six and trying to get to FY twenty-six, is that, are we trying to, is that our goal, is to to make the cuts to get us to that point? Are we trying to get ourselves to a point where we're sustainable beyond that, if any of it, we don't get a lot? I guess what we're trying to.
We need to do all of that, Mark, but I guess my concern, if we cut too much more than this, we don't know where we're falling, that's not like a parent. We don't know where we're falling come July, we've heard a lot of what ifs. Are we willing to change our students' programs entirely today, based on the what ifs? It, you're the board, you, we, you hire us to make proposals, but you vote them in or vote them down, so you're, and you're our guy, you represent the constituents. What do we have an appetite for? So I'd like to hear more discussion. I'd like to see that we lessen deficit spending, I want to be able to certify our budget. I'm like Tom, I don't wanna be cutting back so far that we're taking programs away from, learning opportunities away from kids. But if that's where we're at, we can keep cutting.
So I I think our goal should be to to keep these cuts as far away from the kids as we possibly can keep them, you know, I think they should obviously be out of the, you know, be out of the classroom, but I, I, you know, I mean, I, you know, nine hundred dollars pay to play, I I don't have an appetite for that. You know, fifty, forty percent of the district is free and reduced lunch, to come out here and say nine hundred dollars is the pay to play, when it still doesn't cover the cost, in my opinion, is fiscally irresponsible, and I think it discriminates against a lot of kids based on their ability not to pay. So, you know, I I guess we we need to really just try to figure out what it is that we're, we're gonna try to do, because it sounds like on Monday is when we're gonna vote, I I keep hearing the what-if July thing, and I, that just, I I don't like the what-if July thing, because, you know, you you just, what if we get a pay raise, what if we don't? We need to make a plan based off of what we know, right now, we need to be able to let these families, this community know what next year's gonna look like, based off of what, what your forecast says Monday, when you run it, prior to the the meeting, that's what we need to come in here and make decisions based on, with no, no what ifs in it.
So, Mark, based on what you're looking at tonight, what is your opinion on what that dollar amount should be?
For pay to play?
No, well, that too, but, um, dollar amount of cuts.
Well, that's what, that's, that's where I'm leaning heavily on on y'all with, I mean, you know, with the extracurricular programs that we have, I mean, do we wanna set a a dollar amount, say this is what we're, we're willing to absorb, is this what we, you, we, we, at nine hundred dollars pay to play, we don't have enough kids last year that participated to cover that cost in twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
Um, I I think we have to come to terms with the fact, we're gonna absorb some of the, some of the cost of this in the district, but we have to factor that in, so I, I don't know how that factors in.
We have to factor it in, though, where do you wanna fall on our reductions?
Well, and that's, so, I I have an appetite, just putting all my cards on the table, I have an appetite to say five hundred dollars is, I think, is is a reasonable dollar amount. I think, you know, that's still is is steep, but five hundred's a whole lot easier to be able to swallow than than nine hundred. Um, maybe, maybe other board members, maybe other people in the district see it differently, but I just, I can't, I just can't get my hands around nine hundred dollars pay to play. Now, if we do that, what does that cost us as a district, what does that add to the deficit spending that we gotta find somewhere else? I don't, I can't answer that, do, do we come back with all the programs that we have had in the past? Do we come back next year and we replicate what we've done over these last two or three years? You know, we may not be able to do that, we may not have to participate, even at five hundred dollars, we may lose enough students that are not able to participate, that we may not be able to do some of those things, so those are the kinds of discussions I think we need to, we'll try to have.
And some of that is contract driven, so. And some of that is contract driven, so supplementals are under the contract. That would have to all be negotiated. We don't have the power to make that decision in regard to what's, you can make recommendations we take back to the union and say, will we consider reducing this? But we don't have the jurisdiction just to say, we're offering X sport, Z sport without, correct me if I'm wrong, Sandy, without taking it back to the union and the supplemental review committee?
Also, the coaches do fall under the, uh, the union, do you understand?
Oh, it depends. If, if their teachers are most likely paying into it, their outside coaches, they're probably not.
So we can get creative and go to the different athletic, like, you know, say, different sports and ask them like, hey, is there anything you could, you know, help us out? Is there anything you don't need? Is there any savings that you can find us?
That, that we could do, but we can't go and say, we're not offering what's on the supplemental schedule. So I think what we have to do is, the way the supplemental schedule works today is what, what do we wanna look at? If we would take pay to play down to five hundred instead of seven fifty, that's a reduction of like a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So what else are we cutting to recoup that?
I got a question about, so are people, are, are, uh, students, are they actually paying their fees? Cause I know like, if we increase the fees to be able to collect, you know, cut our deficit by a hundred and ninety thousand, can we really even count on that? Cause right now, I mean, what's, you know what I'm saying?
That's why a hundred percent of people pay.
So I mean, that one's kinda, I mean, not that I, I disagree with it, but that one idea's kinda rough cause that hundred and ninety thousand, I mean-
Do you have a percentage of people paying?
If people are paying their fees now, I doubt if we increase them.
Did we have that situation in the past? The students have to pay that fee before the first athletic contest or they can't participate.
Which actually, I think that's something we just discussed.
They get on the payment plan now. They're, they don't stick with the payment plan either.
At least they don't have a payment plan?
We have to have a where to pay off before it starts or it, it-
We're doing payment plans.
But the free and reduced don't have to pay?
No.
Those school fees.
Free doesn't pay, reduced doesn't pay.
So, so try, try to stay on, let's try to stay on a, on a straight line with this. I, I mean, the first thing that you're recommending is, is to up these fees to, to recover a hundred and ninety thousand dollars?
Correct, and I think it's realistic, so let me do the math often.
I mean, I, I think-
Forty percent aren't paying. We're not making a vote, we're just making an opinion.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, I, I, I'm, I mean, I think that's kind of a no brainer. I mean, even if they don't pay, I think we should-
I'll go for, I'm just saying like, you know, to include that into our, our forecast, but I wonder what our deficit is right now, your unpaid fees balance is right now.
Well, I know that-
It looks like, what, at around four hundred thousand?
I'd say, let's go with this. Count them down. For easy math.
And I'm gonna go to number four on this list.
Wait a minute.
So, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On, on number three?
Yes.
One of the questions I have about that are, we are talking about charging fees for things that kids pay for and they get something back in return.
Correct.
Okay. And that's a very necessary point of that.
I mean, your fee might be five hundred dollars and it might be, might be two hundred, depending on the class. That's my understanding, right?
Yeah, mostly in the elementary, it's like workbooks.
And that-
High school's a little different.
That one hundred and ninety thousand dollars is in addition to, uh, what kids are already paying. That would be, that's where that savings would come. We're getting more money in because they're paying to take-
Correct, they pay the difference of the actual cost.
I, I have a real hard time with, I, I, I know some, some of these things are necessary and I've been part of this fee thing for a long time. And the last few years, I keep saying to myself, so much for a free education, public education, uh, when kids are, families that are in great need, uh, economically, are trying to send their kids to school, but yet they have to pay a certain amount of money to get that done. So, you know, I know we do have fees, I know we have to, um, charge for-
None of it's good. All of this is awful.
It just bothers me that we, I know we have, there are people who are not, their kids don't qualify for free and reduced and it's still a struggle to pay that fee. I mean, it's still a struggle. And so, I don't, I, I would, I would, uh, I have to sleep one out for a long time.
I have a problem with the state minimum for taking, I have a problem with all of it.
I honestly, uh, I, I don't know that, you know, I have a hard time thinking about, um, five hundred dollar pay to participate.
That's better than nine.
Yep, it's not as good as zero.
I think where we're at right now is we have, trying to take this and cut as far away from the classroom that we can, that I think regardless of what we do now, there's gonna be some sort of impact. I, it bothers me to think that kids are gonna have to walk to school with snow. I mean, even with the lunches, it, everything we're doing, it, it bothers us. We don't wanna cut anything. We still have to certify that budget in three years. I mean, if the money's not in the checkbook, you can't write a check for it. So, I think we've cut now, other than like closing out some of these purchase orders and things, we're looking for, uh, cheaper costs on things. I've been working with people, um, analyzing our cafeteria operations, food costs. I mean, I've put a whole lot of time into this trying to find reduced costs for the things that we are buying. I just think we're at that point now, it's gonna be very hard for it not to affect a student somewhere. If we don't wanna cut anything.
It gets emotional and when you bind yourself there, you have to just pull yourself away and go do something else because none of this is good. So, bottom line is we have to cut.
It's actually, it's extremely frustrating.
Money. The bottom, the bottom line is we have to cut money. What is there an appetite for? We could go back to the drawing board, but we're taking electives away.
We don't wanna do that.
So, you know, this is a hierarchy. This is what's in the next round. We've got, and the, the third round is taking it down to state minimum. I mean, we can reduce administrators, we can reduce all elective courses, we can lessen bell schedules. That's where we're at. So, do we wanna do that or are we gonna do this?
Well, I, I think the elephant in the room is, is, do we have an appetite to close the buildings? I mean, that's one of the things that a lot of people were speculating, I know it was on the survey. Where are we at with that? Is there a savings number here in front of us, of the building?
Well, you guys have savings in November at the meeting before I got here. And that's what was on the website of four hundred thousand dollars. And then I went to Salem and told you all that wasn't happening. But I understand everything's back on the table when we're talking about, um, budgets. But I believe the four hundred thousand is shy. I think that's not counting the personnel savings, all the personnel savings.
We're gonna have to shut those personnel down at our buildings and it's all like-
Not all of them. You don't have to, you don't have to, um, put all your cafeteria, your SRO, your, um, now, if you have buildings at a thousand, you wanna have another assistant principal in there. You might wanna look at nursing, um, you don't have the utilities, you don't have the maintenance expense, but you have people losing their, their neighborhood school. So it's basically what, do you have an appetite for? This is where we're at.
You know, if, if people are, if we're not willing to, to pay for having schools located, or if we're not real, willing to spend that money, then we have to do what we gotta do to make, to be able to operate. So, I mean, if we can provide the same education or better by doing something different, I definitely think that's something we need to look into.
The, the first, um, sweep is that there is room at the intermediate building to add second grade two and a, um, the interventions you need. And the question that becomes, can we house all the preschool? We can therefore move kindergarten over to the primary. The, the real question is, do we have enough room for all of the preschool needs? I'm being told yes, but that would move some of the interventions to, um, main quarters. It also would move your art and music and push them into the classrooms versus their own class. Again, none of this is good, but where's the hierarchy and where's the appetite?
So I, I just, I, maybe I'm just not picking it up, but I, it's like, sometimes I feel like we're in like this desperate situation where the, the walls are falling in on us and then sometimes I feel like we can, where we can make some of these, some of these other cuts and they're okay. I'm just trying to-
Cause it depends on your lens, right? Everybody comes in with a different experience.
I keep, I keep getting different vibes off of this conversation. One, one minute I feel like it's very desperate, one minute I feel like we can't cut busing and five hundred pay to play and pay school fees and everything's great. I'm, I'm just, I don't feel like I truly have a good appreciation.
It's not right, Mark. We have to make the point hundred, one million plus. And if you're talking about adding an administrator, it's plus. So where do we want it to come from?
So-
Do we wanna reduce our electives down to state minimums and shorten our bell schedule? Do we want to just continue to be cautious and reduce through attrition? And, and look at possible additional, um, reductions? Do we wanna increase fees, pay to play? Do we wanna close a building? What is it that we wanna do? All of that's on the table. If that's-
Round one has happened. And this additional mi- one million that we're talking is round two, right?
And this, this is just my proposal, but if the board has an appetite to move in, uh, closing a building or close electives, that supersedes this proposal.
So what, in round two of this, this one million dollars in round two, what is the net effect of that down there in terms of this difference?
I, I would love to say that we, but again, until we get it, get this year closed out.
I've asked you this five hundred times.
Because, because you don't know what you don't know.
But just estimate on what you know today and it does push the deficit spending down there a little bit.
That's why I can't, I, I can't say another million dollars in cuts. Right now, makes sense because I don't know what that's gonna do to that bottom line. Here, here's the thing about school funding. It's, we're never gonna, ever, there is no school in the world, unless it's private, that can continue to have enough money to function if cost, if there's inflation in the economy, which there is, there are pay raises for staff, which there are and should be. And your funding doesn't grow at the same pace or rate that the expenses grow. You'll, you're never gonna be in a position that you can cut your way to black numbers all the time. There's, at some point, you're gonna come up with a red number at the bottom line because-
Of inflation.
And becau- because the legislature has put into the formula a method to make us go back to the public every four to five, six years, whatever, and ask for more money.
And depending on our values and our, our, where we're, our value assessments are, is how much burden that puts on the public people.
So basically, we need to figure out what can we wait until July on? So like, we can wait till July to make our decisions, but like, on here, do we wait until July to where if we're gonna do a cut in transportation, we say, hey, we'll wait until July and then we'll now skip the desperate?
Listen, you're not getting two million dollars cutting nickel dining a, per an employee here, an employee here. We have to look at some of these big ticketed items. We have to look at, so what is proposed to you tonight is increase, um, athletic, uh, sport participation and the state minimum transportation. That's what we wanted to add in March. If you don't have an appetite for that, I've heard from people, are we closing a building or are we reconfiguring? What is it you wanna do so I even know where to start?
So I think what, what I'm getting from them is, why are we making these drastic cuts? If in July, we're gonna come back and get additional five hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna give this two hundred thousand-
This isn't drastic. This is just to get us to save. Looking at that five-year forecast, you feel like it's drastic?
Um-
I don't feel like it.
The, the thing of-
I feel like it's pretty obvious.
The way that I look on it is, why would I put, why, you know, that's like, in my, in my household budget? I look at this living household. I try to, you know, think about it like that. My kid needs to eat, but I wanna make sure that my savings is ten thousand dollars. So we're not eating supper tonight, kids, because, uh, it'll bring us down below ten thousand. That doesn't make sense to me to do that. Now, we are supposed to be good stewards of the money in this district. And we need to continually do that. So if these cuts need to be made because they are the most sensible things to do, to be good stewards with money, we don't need these additional staff. You know, you know, ten people ride the bus to the high school. And so why would we not cut state minimum, you know, down with that? As a household person, I'm constantly looking at how to decrease my bills. You know, renegotiating the cable bill, renegotiating the phone bill. No, I'm not gonna do that. Like, I'll just continue paying them more than I need to. That is, that's like, that's how I kinda consider this. We need to always be looking at it. And I feel like as a board member over the last twelve years, we have done that. We have, we are continually trying to look at. I know there are people in this district and who disagree with that and think that we've not been fiscally responsible, but with the numbers that we were given, cause we looked at five-year forecasts all the time. We made decisions in order to be for a goal and things that we thought we needed, things that went better for the district, things that would make it better for the kids. We did not make decisions to, you know, hire administrators just because we wanted to make sure that we had, um, you know, twenty-five administrators. That's not, that's not what we did. We thought we needed those in order to go forward and make it better for the kids. Now, we're at this point, okay, what can we cut but still make it better for the kids and not let them have supper at night? So, you know, with, I think what Tom is saying, and I agree with Tom, we make cuts that make sense. If that includes a pay to play, we need to know that now. I don't think anybody wants to go in in July and be like, oh, by the way, before your kid can start football in August, I'm gonna need you to pay seven hundred fifty dollars. They need to be able to prepare for that. So these long-term things that are gonna, you know, have the bigger impact, we need to let people know what we're doing. But come back in July and say, okay, now where are we at? We need to renegotiate, you know, our cable bill and let's see, you know, what, what cuts we can make that will make our budget make more sense. Like, and the, you know, if we need to put another levy on, we need to know when do we get that revenue? Because I don't know, how long do we have until an income tax levy, we go back out to twenty-six to start collecting?
It'd be eighteen months running after, or it ought to be a year, the next calendar year.
It's the year after the fiscal, so it depends on when you put it on. So if it's November, it'd be years from now, do you agree?
So it'd be a year, so it'd still be twenty twenty-five? If we pass an income tax levy, end of November, it would still be twenty twenty-five?
Yep.
Okay. Cause those are the things I need to know. And then, you know, you had said, you had mentioned that there's an additional possible, you know, three million dollars out of I N E M. When are we gonna know that information?
That's the five hundred.
That's the five hundred thousand, okay.
It's, it's staggered.
Okay.
No return.
Um, you know, cause I'll tell you, I, I have kids in this district. I went here, I graduated from here, my husband graduated from here, I love Edgewood. And I think it's a great place for his family. There are people who don't agree, you know, I, I don't know why they're here. But, um, my kid came home the day after the levy and I said, you know, tell me what the perception is. Tell me what's buzzed, what's going on. He said, the voters spoke and they don't think we're worth it. That broke my heart. Because every kid in this district is worth whatever we have to do to sit here and provide for them, you know, well-rounded student. That's what we need to do. And I don't care if it takes us two months to get through this stuff. Like, I think we need to look at every nook and cranny and not just be like, okay, well, let's just cut busing because that's four hundred thousand dollars and that's the easy thing to do. I'm not about easy. I'm about, let's make it for the kids. And, you know, ROTC, I'll call an appetite for that. That's fifty kids. And I know that fifty kids doesn't seem like a lot in our district, but I think that seems important.
Even if the community survey was okay with it? Even if the community survey was okay with it?
Well, yeah, what if the ROTC people didn't even take it? And how, I mean, they're gonna be all hunters, there's only fifty of them, you know what I mean? Clearly. So are we gonna pick football or ROTC? There's how many kids in football? Everybody knows Edgewood's a football town, uh, football school. But I think ROTC is something that's important. I mean, that's our military, that's using our military. That's why we're free to sit here tonight and talk about this stuff because of the freedom that these kids that are gonna go on and do that. I just, I can't see cutting that. And I don't know what that number is cause it's long thin with this big three hundred dollars.
Let me ask you this, what do you have an appetite to look at?
I'd be okay with, let's talk about pay to play tonight and figure out where we're at with that. If we get to July and, and July- If we get to July, and in July, we get six hundred thousand dollars more, and we get this and we get that, and it's like, okay, we don't have to make them do that now. You know, or maybe we continue to do it until we get a little bit built back up. But I think, you know, pay to play and transportation, people need to make plans. If we're gonna close a building, people need to make plans. This other stuff, people aren't gonna have to make plans, you know, if we cut a paraprofessional or, you know, if we're not providing transportation to sports places that are over less than twenty-five miles. That doesn't affect that many people. Closing buildings, state minimum blessing, and, you know, pay to play, I think are the big ones that affect people. So I think those are where we need to have discussion, talk about that, figure out what we're gonna do with that. And if we come back in, in July and it looks better, then, you know, we can put stuff back, but at least people have planned for it. That's my opinion.
I agree with you. So wait, hold on, I just got confused there. So are you saying don't cut anything?
No. I'm saying let's look at it. If we wanna go ahead and say pay to play and we vote on it in May, people are gonna know, okay, I gotta start figuring out how I'm gonna do that.
Oh, okay.
But then in July, we come back and they're like, oh, no, we're not giving you a million dollars a year, which is okay. Then we can try to pull back a little bit.
When you look at three, four, and five.
What are you looking at, three, four, and five?
On this round two, uh, proposals or ideas to talk about. Uh, when you look at three, four, and five on this list, if each of those are brought together and they're done, we're looking at a total of seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars in savings, correct? That certainly has to contribute greatly to, uh, a better fiscal position going in, uh, going into the, the next year. I, I, as much as I don't like raising school fees or charging kids to play, to be involved with extracurriculars, 'cause this would be banned and this would be, uh, corollaries and this would be football and this would be track and all those different things, uh, come into play in that. It would be, uh, probably supplementals include, um, these, these only athletic supplementals? Or these supplementals for honor society or is it supplementals for, um, the, the different organizations that we have where people are?
Could I call those club sports? That would be an activity fee, but the.
Oh, okay, so it's just as athletics?
Athletic fee. Yes.
Which only comes out of the three hundred.
Right? So we're looking at, we're still looking at seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars in those three areas. Uh, that doesn't touch R O T C and it doesn't touch some of the other things. I, I, I have to agree with, I, no, I don't feel begraved to agree with you, but I believe in what you're saying.
I agree with you.
R O T C, I think is very important. We have fifty kids in there, we may not have fifty kids that take A P chemistry, but I think it's important. Um, so I think R O T C adds so much to kids' experience in school. So yeah, I, those, those three items, three, four, five, I have no, I, I have a lot of problems with it, but I can stomach doing that.
Oh, I don't like it, I don't like that bit. Oh, and then we just pass the levy and we move on, but. What is the number just for R O T C?
The participants?
No, like, 'cause you have that in that big group.
That's actually one of the largest ticketed items, that's at almost a hundred thousand. It is the largest ticketed item.
And why is that? Because we get some help from the Air Force for.
Correct, but we pay for two.
Half that salary.
So it's ninety, we pay for two at half, so it's like one person.
Okay. So we currently have one of those positions still open, correct?
We just, no.
Why do we have two?
That's part of the, the regulation.
It's part of it, okay.
In fact, we were put in jeopardy and almost lost the program because we didn't have two. And it took a while, it's to a Lisa and a few others that did some deep break training and, and innovative advertising and.
Well, and I, Andrew and I, like, we agree, I think, on what he said about one of the coaches and saying like, what, you know, what can you, in your budget? Like, how can you help us in the budget? One of the principles, what can you help us in your budget? Let's, let's everybody look at it and see like.
We've been doing that.
I know, but I mean, like, let's look again, like, is there anything else we can cut? Is there anything else that's not gonna affect the kids, like, you know? Because that's what you do in your household budget, your, your mortgage goes up, you know, and adjusts or whatever, you cut Netflix. We're gonna have to cut Netflix, I mean.
Well, that's what's before you, right here. That's what's before you. So, you know, look, none of us wanna cut anything. I'm proposing a million dollars to push out the deficit so that we're not caught off guard going to the community and going, oh no, we have to go right now.
But we still don't have a million dollars, we still have a million dollars here, so.
No, no, no. Well, yeah, that's my number, I have to mortgage. No, because the fees are down because I'm a hundred percent pay, so take about half a million away.
Well, we're talking, we're, we're not all on the same page on the cost on pay to play.
So if you take that down to five hundred, that'd be two twenty-five, take fees down, that's about another hundred, that's three twenty-five. You've taken out R O T C, that, at about two hundred more, that's a little bit of about a half million.
So that's a half million off.
So where's the other half heading from?
I'm gonna win a little higher. That's my plan.
See, I mean, we, we, we said.
Where did you just come up, where did you just come up with a half a million?
I came up with if the fees going on to one scenario of five hundred for sports versus seven fifty, that would reduce that to approximately two hundred and twenty-five. The fees, if a hundred percent aren't paying, take about a hundred off of that, so that would be three twenty-five. If we take off R O T C, that's a hundred, that's five twenty-five, it's four twenty-five. I'm sorry, four twenty-five, yeah, you're right, sorry, I told you this, Kelly, no.
Did you add a business statement in there?
I did not add a business statement in there. Now you're back down to three twenty-five, and we still need more than a half million dollars, so where are we gonna get that? The biggest ticketed items are transportation, pay to play, and I've heard the board say revisit previous conversations on reconfiguration. None of us, none of us wanna do any of it, but we have to do something, so where do we have an appetite?
Kelly, on, uh, there's, there's two figures on here for transportation to state now, one of them's two twenty, one of them.
That's because we were talking about a two-tier last month. The two-tier dropped off, we would save two hundred thousand. If that's now off the table, unless you wanna put it back on the table, why didn't get two hundred? Because we said to the public in March, if this levy did not pass, we were going to state minimum transportation. That was a board decision. And we also said we were increasing pay to play.
So number four says provide state minimum busing, no high school transportation, savings of two twenty. Number eight, transportation's to state minimum, two fifty.
In addition, if we, if, in addition to the previous savings in round one of a two-tier, so it's four fifty altogether.
Oh, okay, so.
Wait.
So.
No, 'cause we're not at state minimum busing, no high school transportation.
That's still in the second tier along.
Yeah.
That's tier, that's in the second tier. The first tier was, the first round of cuts was looking at two-tier transportation.
On number forty of two twenty, on number fifty of two fifty, and at, at both of them say state minimum transportation.
It's probably an error, I'm looking at what's on the agenda, sorry. There's been so many scenarios, Amy.
Okay, so we need to go with what's on here.
Yes, yes.
So when you say on the state minimum transportation or building reconfiguration.
Both of them come around four hundred thousand. So we'd have both.
Be eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, no.
Eight hundred thousand, what you're saving, we need one point two.
It would be eight hun- that's the low, low cost, it could be a little bit more.
We still need four hundred thousand dollars. Even if we put it up to, even if we bump it back up to seven fifty, pay to play, you still need two hundred thousand dollars. So I mean, we're, we're, we still need four hundred thousand dollars, so that we're talking about at this point.
Well, I mean, there's, there's two buildings in this district that you could possibly close, which I'm assuming they would be pretty similar in savings, whether you close one or the other, correct?
What are they?
Four hundred thousand?
What are, what are the buildings?
Seven mile, baby.
Okay.
Was it approved to put kids in seven mile, but we have to ruin the primary building, right?
Well, that'd be silly, I mean, I think seven miles is in horrible shape compared to Bayback, I mean. The expenditures on that building is way worse than Bayback when it comes to upkeep and everything.
So you said if we, if we was to close down seven mile, or would you move the kids?
Preschool, kindergarten would have to go to the primary building with first grade. And that moves specials on a cart, pushes them into the classroom, they wouldn't have their own classroom. It also puts some interventions in larger hallway, like Title I might be in the main hallway with some wall, portable walls. Um, it would also move second grade over to the E I S, and they'd still have three rooms.
And there's room for a second grade in that building?
Correct.
So when you added these red numbers that are on our screen?
Yes.
Three fifty, that's, uh.
Take the fees down, that's based on everybody paying.
So what are we taking them down to, I mean, I.
I'd say half.
Okay, so, um.
And if you have an appetite to take pay to play down, that would be two twenty-five thousand.
Okay, so if you do three fifty, I must, let's, I'm looking at these numbers right here. So three fifty plus one ninety plus three hundred plus four hundred thousand is one point two million dollars. If we put R O T C back in, take down a hundred thousand, take back a hundred thousand from the fees, that leaves us at a million and forty in cuts. And that's only doing one of the four hundred thousand.
Correct.
So there's a million.
Right. And then if you wanna add an administrator back in there, where?
I don't know how you count this, but those fee amount, you're not going to see that immediately because everyone doesn't pay.
Correct, correct.
But somewhere down the line, when those kids are seniors, they should be paying their fee in order to park, go to prom, walk in graduation and all those different kinds of things. So you should realize the recovery of that, but it's further down the road than when they're in first grade, for example, uh, and over the twelve years. I don't know how you, how you figure that into your budget, but, um, there is the possibility of, of recouping that money. But it's further down the road.
Right. I feel like, if we had a discussion on what's that dollar amount, I feel confident making revisions coming forward before we would have a vote at the next meeting. If I had an idea, is there an appetite for more than a million, is there an appetite, half billion?
I would say we cut. I don't wanna cut more than we have to. I, I'd like to know if we, when we add all this up and we know what it is, what's that going to enable us to do? But I don't wanna undercut it, I, I'd like to be ahead of the game. I don't wanna start, you know, get behind schedule with year two, three, we're in a panic mode. But also, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying I wanna go in and just clean house, you know?
Well, I think we're kinda, we're, we're, we're in front of it right now. It's not like we're behind it. We're getting in front of it now, so anything we say now obviously will make our forecast.
Yeah.
And much better in the future.
The other thing we could do is we could come back with this eight hundred thousand in cuts, adding the administrator, which puts us four hundred thousand short and we could assume risk for another year, and we would technically have that much money in s- in our rainy day fund that would cover us for next year until we figure out what we got going on, and that would give us another year to think about whether we have to close a building or whether we need to do whatever.
Does R O T C pay to participate?
Wow, I don't believe they do. Sandy, do you know anything about that, Beth?
I don't think they do, yeah.
Is that, I mean, I mean, is that, I mean, is that something we could? No, we can't.
I mean, it would be through fee money, but I don't, again, they have to have something tangible for it, so I don't know what. Happening.
Just taking every, every little bit else.
That's true.
I feel like I, I have enough information gathered from your conversation to come back with a good eight hundred thousand dollars. And then again, it would be your job to talk through this in a vote, um, but it gives me a, a, a starting point. I think what I'm hearing from individuals, and again, this isn't a vote, I'm just saying from summation, we aren't at a dollar amount. But it seems like there's an appetite somewhere between a half million and maybe a little north of a million. Um, I feel confident I can go back, sharpen my pencil and come up with some ideas where we wouldn't have to push it to state minimum. We could go back and look at tier two transportation, which would just be half of that savings. Um, go back and, and look at fees. Uh, I didn't even think that a hundred percent, see, again, you're in emotional mode, like, oh. I didn't think a hundred percent are paying, you're exactly right. Um, go back and look at some of the pay to play and, um, I feel confident that I can have enough information to put an agenda together. But I guess my question is, what else do you want to talk about to put to consideration when I put proposals together? Now, on the twenty-third, when you go to vote, that doesn't mean you guys are gonna agree, you're gonna, you might look at it and go, I wanna revise this motion and do X, Y, Z. And that's what you'll do, but, um, I feel like this has been a healthy conversation and I've gained some perspective.
Well, and there are some things on this round two that aren't on this screen that I think are.
Right, that's my working document, that's just something.
Well, I mean, I, I think, like, in the, in the section. No, okay. Um, like, a couple of those aren't on here. So, you know, that would increase, and I think that, um, I'll be okay, you know, it's, um, some.
They're probably not on there because they worked themselves out through attrition or something.
I think the one watch out there that we've talked about tonight, and I'm listening to what you're saying, Kelly, and I'm kinda getting an idea of what's expected to come in here Monday, is that, you know, we're talking somewhere between eight hundred thousand in cuts, maybe down as low as five hundred thousand in cuts.
I'm probably proposing hundred.
If we commit, well, and if we add administrator, like, we all seem to agree, then we're gonna have, we're gonna have one more year of deficit spending. So what is the?
But I can work, it'll give me time to work with our community group and maybe talk about some of this building reconfiguration, talk about our financial affairs. I was in a classroom on leadership that you did the other day, uh, Tom at the high school, and after we finished the leadership characteristics, just shared this recent levy. These are some of the difficult decisions you have to make and, and depending on your style and how you go about doing that. And their feedback was tremendous, so I'm gonna be working with the student advisory group next week, I mean, next year. So I just think the more information we gather, I can gain perspective, just like this conversation here. I feel like I've gained a better perspective of where each individual is and I'm gonna feel better putting an agenda together rather than just coming in with something like this on Monday. So this dialogue's been good. And then you'll break it apart from there and motion, move forward with the motion or tell me to get lost? But I think the seriousness is, we have to make some cuts. What do we have an appetite for?
Well, I mean, and there's, there's a lot of chatter on certain, like, social media sites. Um, and there's been a lot of people step up that said they would gladly support, you know, these are senior parents that are saying they would support students to play next year. So, so they have the opportunities. And I'm, I'm probably not the only one on this board, but, uh, I mean, I obviously would be glad to support a kid for next year, or, I mean, I would take, uh, the money that were made.
My audience take notes. You might not play it for it.
I mean, I'll donate the money that I make, you know, from, from these meetings to, to support a kid, so. I mean, I, I don't think we're gonna have a big issue with the pay to play as much as maybe some of you might think. Um, so I mean, seven fifty is definitely in my range, we're less than Ross, we're less than Tallawanna. You know, everybody says, well, they're gonna leave, they're gonna leave, well, if they go there, it's gonna cost more money than it would be to stay here.
Hey, let me ask this, Gary, uh, hey, seven hundred fifty dollars at a half percent income tax, how much money would your?
For the average household seller?
What would, what would your income have been if you had to pay seven hundred fifty dollars?
But not everybody plays sports, but not everybody.
No, I know, I'm just, just comparison.
He's just.
I just wanna, yeah, I'll create a pro.
I just wanna, yeah, I'll create the problem here, but if you had to suddenly pay a half percent income tax, and it was seven hundred and fifty dollars, what would your income be? Help me out.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Huh?
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so what is our average?
That's medium salary of seventy-eight thousand.
Our average, our average salary, or it's eighty-seven thousand, Mark said, so, uh, somebody that's gonna pay seven hundred and fifty dollars um, for participation fee now, would have been, it would have been a lot cheaper to pay a, an income.
But we only had fifteen percent of the registered voters vote in Willard County.
Eleven hundred and twenty-eight people voted yes, and we've got thirty-six hundred kids in this district, and at least thirty-six hundred parents. Uh, that, that's, that was the deflating thing, I think, uh, for me when I saw the results of that.
Didn't have a vote for every kid.
Well, I mean-
Not even have one vote for every kid. Didn't have.
And, and I'll say, uh, seven mile contingent is here. I, I think we have to really think hard and fast about close to seven mile. Uh, seven mile was the founding school district of this district. Uh, and, uh, my dad went to school there, my father-in-law went to school there, my cousins and all of them went to school there, and so it's, it is an emotional thing for me.
My mom was principal there.
Yes, your mother was principal there. Uh, we've worked hard the last twenty-five years to make sure seven mile was a viable place to have kids. And, uh, so it's, it's a very difficult, that would be a very difficult decision.
It's all difficult. We haven't had new money coming in for a number of years now, and it's, and we're in that time. We just have to make some difficult decisions and it's-
Most of our babies I've taken over the last forty-three years has come from seven mile. I don't know why, but.
Well, I think, I mean, looking back, I think maybe our school fees is very low. We probably paid that maybe when you went to school, dog.
Yeah.
So, other than that, low.
We have school fees.
So, so I mean, obviously, we're gonna have to up some of them fees, and we can't absorb all this anymore. It just is what it is.
But I, I would say this, you, you will, we will never cut ourselves into a financial position where we don't have red numbers somewhere on the budget.
That's true.
No, but we don't wanna get to a place where right in the community, two months later, saying-
I totally agree. I just, it's just, would be a false hope to think that we can, we can cut ourselves to a position where we get rid of red, uh.
Well, I, again, wanna commend this floor and, and Patty, I mean, to walk in a few months ago and look at a hundred point two million of cuts, and now we're looking at more. This isn't easy, but you know what? We're all not gonna agree. But, but we have to come to consensus and we'll afford to keep this district fiscally solvent as long as we can.
Well, and I, I think one of the hard things to explain to people, you know, they say, we need to tighten the, we need to tighten our belt. If somebody said that to me one time, they said, I'm gonna die during this levy, and I thought, you know what, like, how would you like for people to go into your house and look at your budget? Cause I'm sure it's gonna be different than what you think is important and what they think is important. But there are things that we have to pay for, and we don't have choice. You know, we have to pay for kids who are not in our district going to school, and they go to a parochial school. We have to pay their parents because we have to make sure they get there, and we have to reimburse their parents or bus them there. You know, that's, they pay to go to a different school, but yeah, we're paying them to get there. There are things, you know, where kids have special needs and they have to go out of our district, and we pay them, we go to Cincinnati every day. Somebody to drive them there every day, sit with them, come back and drive them back every day. Those are things we have to pay for, and we don't get reimbursed for that in any, you know, any fashion. Some of these, you know, service, purchase services that Patty's talking about, we don't have choice. So there are things that, you know, like, we start out in the hole, and we don't get reimbursed for it, and people say, we need to tighten our belt. You know, well, we need to tell that kid we're not taking him to the service, and then we're in violation, or, you know, let's tell his parents we're not gonna reimburse you, like the state law says, that we have to do, that we just don't have choice. And that's really hard for people to wrap their brains around, you know?
Some of these services are very expensive. I mean, a hundred thousand per student on some of them, which is a pretty heavy burden on, I'm just, it's running into the red, but, I mean, I think the biggest thing that I, that I got asked was the open enrollment piece. I mean, we've got three hundred and twenty-five roughly open enrollment kids, but a lot of people don't understand, a lot of these kids that we're talking about, of that, of that three twenty-five are court placed kids, am I correct?
Court placed, court placed and open enrollment's separate.
Okay, so none of them kids that are court placed are of that three twenty-five?
I think we're, this, this conception is, they are outside the district and they're placed in here, so to a teacher, they look like they're open enrollment, sure.
But this three fifty number that people keep throwing at us, is that include court placed, or is that just strictly?
Three hundred on open enrollment, that is not-
Plus court placed.
Plus court placed students.
But how, how much money do we receive for those three hundred kids?
More than eight hundred thousand dollars.
So, so what would happen if, ask those people, we take that eight hundred thousand dollars out of our budget, how are we gonna replace it?
Well, Ian, we make sure that we're monitoring that, so if we accept a kid, that's not gonna add another teacher's salary. Like, though, we're full in that grade, we can say that.
We actually went through our applications, and we are trying to do a better job of looking at, um, personally, I think we shouldn't take any, if we're at twenty-two, that's, that's, again, Kelly, that, I don't think we should be taking up an enrollment to allow growth over the summer. We've already started that train on the track, so we try to take it around twenty-five and not accept it. Because you don't wanna take families that have been here their whole career and say, oh, we're at twenty-five, you can't come. So we try to balance some of that and slow it down on those entering so we can get there, and it's not as, yes, it's a lot of money to the district, but it's also a cost of instruction to the teachers.
And how many of those three twenty-five are teachers' kids?
I mean, families.
About, would you say, well?
I think there were about forty last time I looked, yeah.
So forty of those are, are benefiting the teachers out, for, for sure.
Correct.
I, I do wanna say things, one thing as we're wrapping this up, Kelly, I appreciate you bringing this up. You know, Gary mentioned social media, and I've had a lot of conversations, and one of the numbers that we threw out with the levy campaign was that eighty-six percent of our budget goes to salary and benefits, and if I was told it once, I was told it a hundred times, that no school district should all operate with their, their, uh, their salary and their benefits being that much of their budget.
That's about the average.
It's basically irresponsible. I actually, I actually looked it up.
We're a little over, I think.
National Center for Educational Statistics says that ninety percent on average is what US school districts have. So we're actually fiscally responsible, but you talked about, and I understand he's sitting over here, and, um, you know, our teachers are in the bottom half, bottom water, and a lot of-
And they're running.
And they're running, and it's gonna be very difficult for us to retain people, and I, I think, you know, we gotta be-
So where does that count?
Fiscally responsible, but we, we need to plan for that.
Exactly.
If we don't take, if we don't take care of people, we're gonna, we may keep some of them who are tenured educators, but I, I think we're in a real serious situation.
So if we don't have, yes, exactly, but we don't have revenue coming in, so where are we taking it from? So I just wanna encourage you, we're gonna have, I, I think we did well. We, we're gonna not do exactly what we probably should do, but we gotta stomach it. We're not gonna go over a million. We're gonna go, I'm gonna come in with less, uh, recommendations.
So that's a version-
But we're gonna study, but we gotta keep moving on this so that we can, again, increase performance. That happens with quality staff and, and while in the run.
That number you threw out was one point two million. It sounds like we're talking eight hundred thousand now, and there's no money in there for-
None.
For recruiting and retaining good, quality educators, and if we, if we don't think about that,
Question.
we're in trouble.
Yep.
Or will it come from, well, we're gonna-
I wouldn't know, but where are we getting it? I think it's significant. I, I'm, I'm saddened by what we offer our staff.
And if we, you know, our kids are gonna suffer for it.
Absolutely.
Well, I mean, that's a discussion we're gonna have to have, and honestly, I, I feel like the discussion that we had tonight is gonna lead to proposals Monday that's gonna basically keep us at the status quo for another twelve months, but we're gonna be right back here this time next year having the same discussion. We're gonna be talking about closing buildings, we're gonna be talking about statement of transportation, we're gonna be talking about pay to play. We're gonna have this, this conversation, this isn't the last time we're gonna talk about this. We will talk about this again next year. You feel it's longer on the board. Well, we haven't done it for a long time. We, we haven't been in this situation in a long time.
And again, no decisions are being made tonight, so if you want to make recommendations that we move forward on like placement of additional staff or whatever, that needs to be in a meeting on the twenty-third. I mean, I heard what you said, but that's not, sorry, twenty-second. Um, I heard what you said, but that's not in action, Kyle, right? Just wanna keep this clean, right?
What did I say?
Add an administrator. Consider that.
And technically, a business guy, your administrator, if you evaluate people, and, uh, we don't necessarily need somebody. We need somebody who knows business, right?
We might be on contract and service.
Yeah.
I agree.
And there's some, I think, you know, BIOX is one of them, there's several.
I mean, while we're talking about, you know, maybe some, some extra money that possibly could come in, I mean, is there any word on the Rocky Pipeline? Has, has there been any decisions in court with them?
No. Did he hear maybe a year out?
Two years. Well, I'll have a vote, and that, that would be a blessing.
That would be a big piece of money.
Yes, yes, a fine call, absolutely.
So maybe, uh, rainy day fund, I hope so.
I'm just conducting a cafeteria audit. What is an audit going to look at exactly? Do they look at, like, the number of workers we have?
Yes.
Food costs and stuff like that?
So, uh, we have been, we've worked with two people with outside companies. One's a lot cheaper than the other, but they look at our labor costs, they look at our food costs, they look at our practices, and they come in with ideas.
I am gonna be shocked at what happens here.
Well, just looking, like, just the first glance, they're like, you're okay with labor, but we need work to do with, um, food purchases and food reimbursement and practices, so that's an area of, that's a goal for the fall, and we're already getting started with the audit. And this, and the both, both people guarantee whatever we pay, we get, like, so much money back, so that, that price will come back to us through savings.
Is everybody good? Um. I just wanna thank everybody for coming tonight. Obviously, it was short notice, um, changed venue, um, but it does show that we got-
Change of agenda.
Change of agenda. So, but, but, I mean, I hope you know that we all appear cared. We don't wanna cut this school, and we don't want this school to fail. So, we're gonna do everything that we can. Uh, I can guarantee you, we're not gonna agree on this. So, um, but we're all gonna, we're gonna get through it and work through it, and be friends when it's over, so. Thank you all for coming tonight, and at this time, I'm gonna look for a motion to move to executive session to consider the employment of, employment of a public official.
So moved.
Mr. Meerschmidt, a second.
Second.
Mr. York. Mrs. Bowers, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Meerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion gets five zero.
I'm just going to look for a motion to adjourn. Is that all right? York. Mrs. Bowers, would you call the role, please?
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Meerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.